Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated, thank you. This is a special meeting of the board, and I have been advised that notice of this meeting was timely given to the media and posted on the The purpose of tonight's special meeting is twofold. First, a work session of this board to discuss the contents of the report of our village consultants concerning the current condition of the St. Paul's Building and the potential stabilization costs. And second, an executive session to deal with certain personnel issues. Please remember that during the work session, and unlike a regular board meeting, public comments and questions are not taken. Only the village consultants and board members will be speaking this evening. It is not anticipated that any formal vote will be taken in open session this evening. Thank you. Members of the board, at this time, I would like to call upon our consultants to present their finding on St. Paul's, and I would like to introduce them. Fire, Linda Bell, Carlos Cardosa. Thornton Tomasetti, Steve Zanker, and Charles Van Winkle. CNY, Walter Beal. VHB, Courtney Riley. All right, you may begin your presentation.
Thank you, thank you Mayor Trope and the Board of Trustees, thank you. Thank you for having this meeting so we could explain to you the report which we Thank you for having us, so we could explain the report that we did on August 22nd of this year to all the consultants put together, which is a report that explains and assesses the temporary protection required for St. Paul's. Again, I think the key word here is the temporary protection, so that the elements, water rain, infiltration, and other elements will stop entering the building causing the decay. The report which has been posted is about four hundred plus pages, so the reason for being was to give you a broad brush overview of what's in the report. I expect that everybody will take the report back, now this is a study, it's pretty complex. But we thought the best way to explain this report is as follows. Steve Zitzer with Thornton Tomasetti will speak on behalf of the structural components and the issues that are currently occurring within the building. Courtney Riley of VHB will speak to the environmental assessment report and the cultural resources as well, diligence report, diligence report I should say. And last but not least, Walter will speak to from CNY in terms of the cost associated with all this work. I'll come back at the end to wrap it up and basically explain what we think the next steps, what we suggest the next steps should be, and then obviously answer questions and answers.
Thank you.
So with this, Steve.
Thanks Carlos. I've got Chuck Van Winkle up with me here, I'm a partner of Thornton Tomasetti, and we've been tasked with the structural component of the study, which at this phase is the structural piece exists and there's issues, but what we really want to do is protect the building, right? There's not a lot of actual structural work going on, it's how do we protect the structure? Because the structure itself already has signs, there's obvious signs of deterioration, there's signs of that upcoming deterioration. Then there's areas that are okay, and then there's areas we can't see. So there's areas that we've identified that are at risk of collapse, local failure. Not the whole thing coming down, but pieces that make up that, and what that would do is just exacerbate the situation that we're in, which is the elements coming into the building. So I'm going to turn it over to Chuck, because he's going to speak to the thorough evaluation we've done of the building and basically how they enclose it and protect it.
Thank you Steve, I'm Charles Van Winkle, Thornton Tomasetti, part of the building level of preservation group. So our report basically is in three pieces, immediate action, which is then, then there's priority two, which is early action, and then priority three is maintenance. So immediate action, which means has to happen immediately, right now. And after a while, it's around portions of the mansard roof, which is the steep pitched roof. And areas of that have to be sure right away, and roof patches applied to keep the elements out of the areas. We did see that some areas of the rafters were in poor condition. So wood floor choice as well, and some of the where they engage, some of the exterior walls have to be sure as well. Windows, we need to temporarily infill the missing glass, we need to keep the birds out of the structure, the birds are causing havoc to the upper floors. The ivy, we want the ivy removed from the façades, ivy might look nice, but it's causing deterioration as it grows into the facade. And we also can't see what's happening behind that, if there's more conditions in. Missing downed guts and scubbers, basically the whole stormwater management system is in accelerated state deterioration. And that's also causing extensive freeze thaw damage to the brick facade. And that brings us to loose and unstable elements. Immediately we say the area should be quarantined, but we thank the town that they've already done that, they installed a fence, so you know, we're not concerned with people jumping over and getting hurt from things falling. Then, just quickly going to priority two, which is early action, I think everyone can see that the roofs are in in poor condition. So the mansard roofs need to be basically completely replaced. That goes with flat roofs as well, those will need to be replaced, this is early action, not immediate. Flashings, gutters and downed spots, windows, so forth. Then this is to the meat of the facade, which is the brick and stone, that's actually in pretty good condition in relative terms. And that's a testament to the original construction of the structure. It's just deteriorated localized areas, and that deterioration basically revolves around the failed stormwater management system. Biological growth, like the moss removed, that is causing damage to the facade and fire escapes, they're in a state deterioration. And we're not going to, if we're going to use them, we're going to, should issue your store, if not, we should take them down.
Do we have a slideshow of what you're talking about, so we can actually see it?
It's actually in the report.
I get it, but it would be helpful to have you explain and show pictures of what you're talking about.
Yeah, Steve's wanted me to clarify as well, some people think when I say roof, it means the whole roof structure has to be rebuilt, that's the membrane of the roof needs to be replaced. Our report also includes all the photographs we took, and a comprehensive diagram showed all the areas of deterioration that we saw.
So just a couple items, so again, if I understand this, the route that we've gone is firstly, we are inspecting the building. Correct. We did. Second phase is we're going to abate the building. And then the third phase we're going to do is destabilize the building.
So Walter Beal from CNY, and Courtney, we can only with this. The first, the inspections that we made so far can only go so far because the building is open to the elements. So environmentally, it's still deteriorating, and letting may still be continuing to fall, and pigeons may continue to spew eggs from all over the place. So the first phase after the inspection would be to, should you guys go forward with this, would be to protect the building.
So stabilize first.
Stabilize and protect.
And then?
And then.
Alright, I was correcting my three items, I just had the order incorrect.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, alright. As far as abating, and I'm trying not to jump ahead of whoever we're talking, but I would really like, because when I mention certain things, people, they were shocked. But I would appreciate if someone could explain to the public what exactly we're abating, because I think looking into report, there's a lot more things in there that people don't realize. So somebody could address that. Can we go bounce back?
Good evening, my name is Courtney Riley, I'm from VHB Engineering.
So just take the mic right there.
Good evening, my name is Courtney Riley, I'm from VHB Engineering, 104 Parkway, up in New York. I am the Director of the Land Development, I also have with me Steve Kaplan, who is the Director of Oil, Hazers, and Material. And Alison McGovern, who's the Senior Archaeologist and Cultural Resource Specialist. So if you have even more detailed questions, they can also help us out. VHB completed two reports, one was the Cultural Resource Due Diligence Study, and the second was a Phase One ESA. The Cultural Resource Due Diligence Report identifies the existing and potential historic archaeological resources associated with the building. It also did a preliminary assessment of the potential impacts of that of the proposed project that may have on historic and archaeological resources. So everything existing, and then what would be potentially in the future. This is a desktop review, historical maps, narratives, site documentation, and then a site walk, I'm actually walking through the building and in and around the building. We also contacted the New York State Historic Preservation Office, that's SHICO, so if you heard that term, we contacted SHICO. And we reviewed the proposed concept as well as talked about the building itself and what we're going to do there. Again, as stated previously on the village website, we do have this report, it goes through our methodology, it goes through, you know, history of the project and of the building. Architectural, as well as archaeological, local, state, and federal actions that would trigger the SHICO to intercede and have to coordinate with them. As well as the preliminary determination of potential effects, and how we proceed, how we think you should proceed further. So the results of that due diligence report, the concept design that was shown, which is the last concept that the board has seen, the concept that everyone has, is July 2018. And this was shown to SHICO, and it would say it would not cause the building to be delisted from the National Register, and this is part of discussions with SHICO. They stated that if the project requires any state, federal permits, approvals, funding, then it would be subject to a mitigation strategy. And this would be for the proposed project and even some of the abatement. So you probably would ask, what would that strategy look like? And what we would recommend is called HAPS, Historical American Building Survey Level Documentation. And what that is, it includes large format prints, video, historic narrative for each of the areas within the National Park Service. And what we'd recommend is that, you know, the first informants is protecting this building. And that once the building is protected and safer for everyone to go in it, that we would then prepare a documentation that would be completed, propose any changes, and alter the integrity of the character defining spaces of this property. So after the temporary protection, that's the most important, but before the abatement. So before we start cleaning and doing any of the additional abatement, we would recommend that, you know, we take these formats, document everything, so SHICO has that information. Just as you've said before, we do see the project being split up into these three phases, temporary protection, abatement, and then the proposed project. For the temporary protection, SHICO would not need to be an involved agency, they're not an involved agency at this stage for the temporary protection. For the Phase Two, as we would call it, Project Abatement, there is a potential that they would want to be involved, they would want to know what we're cleaning, how we're cleaning it. And we would consult with them. For Phase Three, obviously the proposed project, the design team would have to coordinate with SHICO on Sessions 14.09 and 106 to review the impacts of the historical resources, as well as with the Garden City Historical Society. That's the cultural, I'm going to go now into the Phase One ESA report, so this is a little bit more on the abatement.
What is ESA?
ESA is Environmental Site Assessment, so Phase One, it's called Phase One Environmental Site Assessment. The purpose of this document, the purpose of the Phase One ESA is to identify really four things. It's called Recognized Environmental Conditions, RECS, you may have heard that before. Controlled Recognized Environmental Conditions, CRES. Historical Recognized Environmental Conditions, HRES. And Business Environmental Risks, what is called BURs. So what we looked at was the building itself, as well as the area behind the building that a proposed project would happen. And based on all of our data, all of our research, a site inspection, record review, there were no RECS, so there was no recognized environmental conditions. This means that there is no evidence of contamination. However, we have identified what's called Business Environmental Risks. These are things that obviously affect how you move forward with any proposed development. So I'm going to name a couple of these BURs that were mentioned in our report, and then recommending how to fix them, okay? So the first is, it's really simple, there's hazardous material that was observed within the basement and maintenance areas, kitchen areas. This is paints, varnishes, cleaning agents, you know, bottles of old cleaning and caulking, caulking, bleach, cleaners, these would have to be removed. So we remove the materials and dispose of them. Again, these are all things that we would recommend after the temporary protection. There is one out of service fuel oil tank, it's underground, it's to the south of the building, it's registered with Nassau County. This would just have to be abandoned, rather removed in accordance with Nassau County Health Department's standards, this is standard operation. The other is the asbestos, lead-based paint, and PCBs that are present within the building materials. So this is probably the most significant. We would recommend a formal survey of what we would call the asbestos, the lead, and the PCBs right after the stabilization. Stabilize the building, then do a full report. This would give you that cubic footage, that yardage, how much asbestos, how much actual material is in these building materials.
What is PCB sample?
It is polyfluorinated by fentanyls.
Translating.
PCBs.
Yeah, not something you want to eat.
So for the lead-based paint, would, again, all of this would be part of the abatement after the temporary. Water damage, so water damage really leads to obviously the potential mold and mildew that is within the building. The temporary protection assessment report recommends making the building watertight, just like we spoke about before, making sure we're covering everything. This would further prevent water damage, would further prevent the spread of even more mold and mildew. And that, again, during the abatement phase, after we protect the building, mold and mildew would be abated by a licensed contractor, and that would be cleaned up. One of the last ones we have is the significant amount of bird guano. And this was really observed throughout the entire building, as well as active nesting and eggshells. The temporary protection report includes the removal of these birds within the building, and washing the guano areas where they have to protect. And then it would be further part of the abatement later on when we did the abatement. So this summarizes everything in those two reports, again, I have the specialists here that prepared them, if you have any very specific questions. And I'm sure we can take some questions now if you have any.
I have a question, before they were talking about having to seal up the windows, and I thought when the gentleman spoke, he had said put glass back up there? And were we really to put glass back up there, or were you going to put something like protective?
No, it's temporary, so whatever CNY, ultimately, we work with CNY, the strategy of getting with that, but it would be a cost-effective temporary there.
I know, but rather than having big giant pieces applied over there, what I'm saying, are we going to put like clear plastic up there?
You can put clear plastic up there.
And the other thing is, can you explain to the public, we were talking about before, the aspects of walls, detachment, or whatever? I think that people need to realize that the reason that we're addressing this is because of what we've seen inside the building. So if you could explain that, you know, this is not just like, you know, a couple bricks that are separated.
So the wall detachments are areas where obviously elements have infiltrated the building, the structure itself is a varying wall structure, so the floor is literally bare on the walls. And where the walls are always the most susceptible, because it's the exterior perimeter of the building. So water's gotten in and deteriorated the ends of the wood elements that bear on the walls. So there's places where, you know, you always have multiple wood joints that tie in, where, you know, there could be a couple of them in a row that actually aren't bearing at all, because they're sort of hanging with the floor. So it's just a matter of time before that zipper is undone, right? Because you can have a couple that are compromised, but the ones around it do the work of holding up the floor. But there's a handful of areas where we've seen this, that the end conditions are compromised, and eventually what happens is that will spread. And then you might have a localized floor collapse, which then puts the wall at risk, because then the wall is not braced. So that's what that is, that's probably, that and the immediate roof, the exposed areas of the roof, and the wood that's been affected by the water infiltration, those are the most at-risk structural areas.
And as far as the flooring goes, did you find areas in the building where there are issues with the flooring?
It was mostly at these perimeter edge conditions, because the center, you know, the center, it's a wood floor, so it just kind of spreads out. Where it matters is where it sits and stays, so it's mostly the edge conditions.
My last question, I think, is for her. One of the opportunities that I had earlier was to meet several people in the garden society, and kind of addressed it, but I just didn't be able to explain it in more detail. One of the things that they're concerned about is many of the historical items that are in there, plaques, and all those things like that. Bottom line is, is that St. Paul's is under what the residents consider, and, you know, if in the event we're going to stabilize this building, bottom line is what they're concerned about is the items that were in there. Now, if I was listening to you correctly, I believe that through the organization, the people that you're working with, that would be a priority that they would want you to do, would be to protect or to at least remove those items, or make sure that whatever abatement or what you're doing is not going to destroy those, am I correct in that?
Absolutely.
If you could explain that in more detail, I think, then people would like to know that.
Sure, so what we're recommending after the structure is stabilized, that Historical American Building Survey, it's called the HAPS, Level Documentation is done. And this is going through every single one of those rooms, identifying, taking photos, writing narratives, really going through and looking at everything before abatement. So that we don't just start the abatement, we don't just start washing everything and cleaning it up, and the contractors don't know what they're doing, and just throw out something by mistake. So this document, this we're proposing is right after the temporary protection, this would be our next step to ensure that we have identified what is archaeologically sensitive, what is historically sensitive, and we would work with, obviously, your society as well as SHICO on that.
I have a question down the group, just to, as I read the summit's report, from what you said tonight, do I understand correctly that you have not been on the third and fourth floors? Is that?
We have.
Oh, you have been, so you have seen the damage on the third and fourth floor as well? And is the third and fourth floor in worse shape than the first and second floor?
Yes, third and fourth floor are in an advanced state of repair. As I said a couple of times prior, the building, the lower portion of the building, the foundation, and I think Thornton Tomasetti will agree, the lower two floors, actually, the building has good bones, it's in significantly good shape structurally, it's only where water is getting in. Or where, you know, the pigeon experiment has the acids in it, and it can start rotting things as well, and there's so much there, so. But let me back up. Walter Beal again, CNY group, thank you for having us. Carlos mentioned, he introduced me as last but not least, because what everybody wants to know, I'm saying why, when CNY has the cost, how much is it going to cost? Two things need to be made clear before I continue, so one, is this is a budget. Everything that Thornton Tomasetti explained, all the different items, would be broken windows, broken and open and structural issues with the roof, the loose bricks, the ivy, each one of those items was walked by me with different specialty contractors, and they gave me her location, we can use this amount of money, this amount of money. This is something that if we choose to go forward, I then very quickly work with Joe Di Francisco's group and deliver scopes of work to them that can be then publicly bid out, competitively bid, which is the way it needs to be done, as a public entity owning a building, has to be done that way.
Not to interrupt you, but before you go any further, I'm just a little confused. You say that water damage, you say the building is structurally okay, is that a proper way to say it? If that be the case, I'm a little confused as to the water damage on the beams at the end. How can it be structurally, am I missing something, I'm sorry?
It's localized, so the, it's roughly 200,000 square foot building, right? So the, what? The majority of the structure is okay, right? But there's the areas where the roof has an obvious hole, and that more water got in, and that area is compromised. That's why I keep saying it's at risk of some failure, but it's localized, so the building's never going to just, I can't say never, but, you know, the whole thing's like that. You might have an area where the roof collapses in, it causes issues below, but they're localized. So what Walter's point is that the building itself, it has been, it has great structure, it's lasted a long time, where it's not affected by.
I beg to understand, thank you.
And there's, go ahead.
That's only true to the extent you could see what.
This is true.
Can't hear you. Said that's only true to the extent they could see what they could see, so when they take away a wall, if they had to, you don't know at the moment what's going on behind that wall.
So to expand on what Mr. Tony's saying is, should we go ahead and protect the building, and then abate the building? We would then go in and do probes and further inspect the structure to see what else, may or may not be wrong.
I just have a question, so the immediate action items, a priority one, aren't like recommended to do now?
That's correct.
Is there a timeline of when the early action items are to do now?
Yes. Should, I don't know how this proceeds, but should we decide to go forward with this, we can immediately meet with the village and begin to procure, the public procurement process is somewhat timely, but maybe a couple of months, we could be working it, we need to be doing this before this winter.
But it just seems in light of some of the conversation, like biological growth, moving laws, I mean, the last four items, priority two, I'm not coming to end to this, but I don't want to go backwards and do something once, and we want to think about it for a while, I just don't know how close these priority one and two items are. It seems like removing and repairing bricks that are going to fall down is now an early action item, but not priority one.
I think, I think if I could chime in too, I think when prioritizing like this, we have to take, you know, count those things that are going to be most, you know, on the priority list, most destructive, or, you know, have the most effect on the building. And then, as they're saying, the only kind of timeline is that about our own internal process, about bidding it out, getting its scope properly, and then awarding and proceeding in that manner. I don't think by priority here, or by mention of timeline, we're suggesting we can punt some of this work down the road. I think it's just, I know, I'm also just clarifying.
It just seems like some of this might be a one, since priority, and they were thinking things, we might want to take the biological growth of the wall.
For sure, for sure, but I think, you know, along those lines, we have a certain process that needs to be followed. So we put it in priority order, and we follow that process as, you know, expedited as we can. can. So I don't think by putting in any priority order means anything's less important or that we would go out of sequence to then double pay for something, but we do have a process.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
But we do have a process to follow.
This is going to fold out, we just expect.
Absolutely, and I think, I think that's, you know, but the issue with any of these things is that once you put a priority list, it's just like at home, right? You're doing your kitchen or whatever, you make a priority list and, you know, the appliances might be forced on it. Doesn't mean you don't need an oven, but it certainly means, you know, we need cabinets and flooring first or whatever, you know, whatever it means to you is one other thing. So I think it's just a matter of sequencing and our own process to get it done.
Let me ask Joe a quick question. What's the minimum amount of time when you put something out for bid that you have to give the bidders the opportunity to come back? Thirty days?
No, no, we normally advertise our bids to three weeks.
Three weeks?
Three weeks.
And also that impacts what you get. Well, I was going to say, we should also prepare ourselves for the fact that with certain parts of this, it's so specialized and these guys can probably shake their head or stand up and wave or whatever. It might, it may take longer than, than for example, three weeks. You might need a little bit more time, everyone might have to visit, really get some eyes on it and see it in order to give an accurate price. But you don't want to do this gloss over something or oversimplify it, then the subcontractor comes on site and says, oh, this is, you know, it's like all of a sudden it's a bad alien autopsy and it's like, oh, this is going to be five times what I told you it's going to be. And then we're over here talking about cost overruns. So if it means another two weeks on the bid, and I just mean, yeah.
I'm just trying to get it clarified so that we and the public will know, you know, what the minimum amount of time is. If you put the bid out tomorrow, we're talking about the middle of October before, if we awarded a bid, before things can start.
If I can ask you a 30,000 foot question.
Okay.
We're talking about a 200,000 square foot building. So we're talking about a massive stretch, okay? You're talking about working with multiple contractors. So as far as how long any particular bid takes or whatever, I'm sure that there are going to be many bids and many things you're going to be doing simultaneously. Here's my question. Assuming that we turn around and we approve this, I don't know if this, this is a, now let's say we approve it on couple of months, okay? What do you think, not knowing what you're running into on a 200,000 square foot building, what would be the approximate timeframe you estimate from the point you would start to the point that this, these two processes will be completed?
It's in the report.
I know, I know. They've seen the report, but that's what I'm asking.
Should I have everyone on board at the same time? Because I came to multiple things at once. Three months from the time we start to the building being involved, being tight.
And then abated.
And then inspected, then that's a big process and then abated.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so from the point that we start, are we probably talking about six months' worth of work or a year's worth of work?
I think more than six months.
From what we've seen, we're thinking that the abatement is between two and three months after the protection.
So again, assuming that if you're saying three months, let's assume it's four, okay? So if that's four months and you're saying three, so assuming that's four, so realistically, from the point when we start, we're probably looking at anywhere from six to eight months before this process will be completed. Is that a realistic?
When you're saying the process, you're talking about the temporary protection and then abating?
Yes. So it'd be six to eight months between the two of you, by the time this is done.
I would agree.
Is that a good assumption?
That's a fair assumption.
That's a fair assumption, okay.
So your list of priorities and the things that you're seeing with, it's a good point. I mean, behind the walls, I mean, once we get in there and we start doing things, the numbers could potentially trip here. So I mean, how are we doing that? Without doing trials and actually doing more of an investigation, I'm a little unclear on how we thought of these numbers.
So one of the recommendations that we had, what we call the business, was doing those actual asbestos survey, lead survey, and that goes in to get to the quantities. So that really goes in and, you know, what we did is a desktop review, we walked the site, we looked through, we identified, yes, this is asbestos, yes, this is lead, yes, this is PCV. Now what we're going to do is a survey, and that's what your contractor wants to secure the building, that's what we would want them to potentially bid on. Because we don't want the contractors going in there and be like, yeah, this is about this, how much, 10 feet of this, 6 feet of this. What, what DPW want, they would want those numbers quantified. And then what you'd also probably get in that bid is a cost per additional ton, and they would all have a cost per additional ton. So you can range and you'd have a better grasp on the cost of that ton.
I see, I see your question. I'm talking about the structural portion and then.
Let me address that. So where there's significant damage and where there will be or could be is usually obvious because the first thing to go is, is the stuff you can see. So the reality of it is that there's, the worst pieces, we could probably see most of it. So the likelihood that there's really bad damage in an area that looks great is low. So the major issues we've seen are where there's a hole, like where, you know, there's holes in the roof and then you can see those areas. So yeah, it's true, we're going to uncover things here and there, but most of it we were aware of because it's evident because the obvious stuff goes first and the structure goes.
My next question is, okay, so we see those things and we fix them, we're going to potentially demolish them, I mean, are we doing temporary protection?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, and it's obviously great questions and concern, the first step is the temporary protection, which let's just simplify this, we're putting the whole building to not take forward.
Stabilizing.
Stabilizing.
Put a word to you.
Here's the issue. The longer we don't do that, the more unknowns we have. And here's a good example, which is real. We went there, it was about July, July, June, July, when all this started. Since then, how many rainfalls have there been, storms, and we were there, we witnessed the water just cascading down the grand staircase, which Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's one of the walls that's almost peeling and coming off. And it's pretty simple why the water's just cascading right down because the skylight's on. So the first thing is stabilizing. So then we can go in there and to your point, inspect it so we know what we're abating and what are the uncovered hidden components that's going to drive the cost down. Unfortunately, none of us here can tell you what that is until we get in there. And I say unfortunately because obviously the public, you, everybody wants to know, but we can't until it's stabilized and we can go in there. I also would say that VHB did the drone flyby, which is the videos which you all posted on your website and you have it. Take a look at that because that's a video, bird's eye view, that actually shows you exactly everything that they're talking about, as close as we can get to without having to erect scaffolds and costing you all this money. So my point here with everyone is, until we stabilize that, however the process is, we're just going to keep making this progress.
Carlos, that's why it would be helpful.
And I apologize. I mean, it's on exhibit B, it's what Don Tommasetti has.
Well, we can try to put those pictures on the website as much as we can.
Already.
Sorry.
It's passing ancient point and then.
No, I agree. I agree.
Just to expand on what Carlos was talking about and maybe to give it a little color since we don't have a video. Above the grand stair, there's.
I went to the areas they're talking.
Above the stair, it's a two-story wall, mansard roofed wall, it's actually two stories high, that 90% of the plaster is gone, so you can see the framing is, has no integrity, at least in two or three areas. And it requires a significant structural scaffolding on the stair just to temporarily hold it in place until we can system the joists or figure out how to fix it. And that one is the one that frankly, I don't like walking past it anymore, you know? I try to go around the backside to get up because I don't, it's getting bad. I'm trying to scam.
Joe's going to try to get.
Your check by the company, you know, we have some technical issues with the project.
So lastly, for me, it's not a secret because this has been posted on the website and I'm sure everybody wants to know. The budget study that we came up to is, amounts to $984,000 just to get the building envelope tight prior to final measurement, ensure structure stabilization, as you like to say.
Does that, does that include a full abatement or a partial?
It does not. It includes spot abatement because there are at least three locations where we have to work in the building. The cost associated, there are costs in here associated with knuckle wounds, large lifts, most of the work will be done from outside. But there are three areas that require us getting inside at least three, us getting inside short form.
There's flapping all over, obviously. Are you stripping every wall? No.
In this phase?
Yep.
Absolutely not. No. Locally move, men who work in the building have to shoot it up.
Yep.
And we'll clean areas locally and install the screen, plastic, and then isolate it from the other hazards.
Can I ask you a question too? Because it, you know, it's a long process. What is it going to look like from outside? Just so we can discuss, you know, the interim time period while you're working, what is the average resident going to see?
Good question. Included in this, in this budget is cleaning up the overgrowth, the brush that is not grass anymore, it's weeds. Soon we'll be poking through the fence, which I don't think any of us want. The ivy has to be removed from the building for structural reasons. And we can, I did include plywood over the windows, it can be plexiglass, we can make it as aesthetically pleasing.
My wood is an eyesore.
Yeah.
Let's not go.
Look at the monsters that there is.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got to figure it out.
I want to ask one other general question too, because one of the things that this board made a decision to do was to put a fence around some holes. One of the reasons for now then was to provide an additional level of security, to provide a safe and available workspace if we go forward with this for the people who will be working. Just out of curiosity, at any given point as we're proceeding moving forward, I'm assuming on a 200,000 square foot building, we're not just going to have two people that work in the line. So would you say that you would have at any time, anywhere between 10, 15, 20 people working in the building while doing, at any one of these phases?
Maybe more like 15.
More 15?
More like 15.
Zero.
You can only get this time, the multiple crews, the multiple crews. There's more than one left at a time, there'll be trucks laying down materials shaking.
Right. And just the reason that I ask that question is that I just want the public to understand that's the reason why the fence was put up as a permanent structure, that's the reason why the area was said side so that this way you guys can go in there if, as we're doing this, so that this way we don't have to worry about stuff falling and plus all the work is the construction crew is there and everything else, we want to provide an apartment that you can be in. So is the area that is provided to, do you feel adequate?
I do.
Thank you. Do you want to show some of the pictures? Go ahead. We got a picture screen. There we go. Section three, going up a door. I think we need to try to turn off the lighting too. I want to go through some of the. Thank you. Sure.
Hi, my name is Michelle DeLucia, I was moved to our team setting, we're having to just run through some of the pictures and photos of the structural pieces that Steve spoke about, but now I'll give you a sense of what we're showing. So this is a location, if you're standing outside the building, looking in, looking towards the building.
Just wait a minute, gentlemen, if we can just keep the conversations down before we go in here.
If you're looking at the building from the street, this is to the left of the main entrance, it's one of those front rooms, and this is one of those places that Steve was sort of suggesting or describing before, where we have these floor joists that were previously bearing, supported on that facade wall that it's hard to see in the picture. It's dark, but they're hanging, they're no longer engaged with the wall and they're basically just hanging off of themselves in a localized condition.
So in this immediate phase, the idea is that you put shoring underneath it because we don't, you don't know when this will eventually collapse.
Can you explain shoring to, maybe not.
So shoring, shoring is, it could simply be a timber four by four piece of wood that's just a post. It's just a temporary post that will support them so that, because they're no longer connected to the wall, there'll be something to support them. So that's a temporary measure that is just to make it safe to be in.
So Steve mentioned that that is a very, that would be a very temporary measure in a more final condition, not the final condition, but what we ultimately could do, you don't have to replace this whole floor system, you would just put in like another wood joist, married them together side by side, and that would be sort of a more permanent fix. You create a new connection with the wall and then everything gets engaged similarly to how it was before. The next place that we highlighted is what Walter described before, this is at that main staircase, right below the skylight. This is an area that, as Carlos and Walter mentioned a few times, where you get a lot of water coming in from both the skylight, but also where you, sorry, where you see the structure here. If you look at it from the outside, the same location, it's already tarped up over here. So there's a tarp out here, there's water coming in at this location, there's water coming in from the skylight, and I think one of our recent walks, there was just water pooling on the landing of the stairs. So this is a highly critical location, same kind of condition. These are the, are the part of the roof trusses themselves, they're meant to be bearing on this wall here, and there's just a disconnect right locally at the edge of this window. So this is another location where in a temporary sense, as Walter said, we erect a scaffold, we support it, and then ultimately we come back and put in similar wood members or maybe it makes sense to do it out of steel that we can slide down the line, but you basically sister something together and recreate the load path that has since been lost because of the deterioration in the wood. The next, again, another one, this one you can see again if you're standing from the front of the building and you look up to the left on the west side of the wing, you'll see this, you'll see this tarp, you'll see this condition. This is something also that needs to happen right away because in order for us to put something protective over this, to protect the roof, you need something to attach into. And right now, the wood rafters of the roof are just deteriorated, you couldn't put any sort of nail or attachment or anything in there, so you'd want to put something there in a temporary condition to just allow us to put a sheathing over it.
Could somebody explain how they're going to do that on the roof? Or what are we doing on the roof? Are we covering the cover over it?
That's what I'm just saying, they were placed to be asked.
Okay. The outside.
You're saying actually how, like the lift and?
Yes.
We'd be working off lifts, bringing material up and basically trying to find sound structures where we have to reopen, we have to open sections here to find sound structure, to install new framing and that new roof sheathing, and then either shingles or ice and water shield or something. So it would be, it's not going to be a tarp, it's going to be something that, you know, give you a couple of years.
And this is also one of those locations that Walter described that will require some kind of interior work as well to get, to get this done. So this is the exact same location from the inside. Oh. In the report, I'm sorry we can't see it, then we have the picture of that, that is, we have the inside photo of that exact same condition so you can get a sense of interior, exterior. Then we highlighted one more location from a structural perspective, similar story.
Can we try to, can we get us this screen here still or not? Do you have just like an agent?
Two trucks?
Yep. We take two seconds to these trucks.
If the next meeting, we could go out and take a look at some of the equipment in this room, so that the next time we have a presentation like this, we can take that back.
Let me just all backtrack a little bit. All right. So just to dial it back, so we looked at this, we looked at this from the outside, which Walter was just describing about needing to cover it up and needing something sound to attach into. This is that same location, but looking at it from the inside, a little bit off-center. This is that hole that we saw on the outside. And then here, where we have it circled, they have a closer, this is a good example of what we're talking about when we say this is part of the wood roof system that is meant to bear down here on this wall, and it's just, it's become disconnected because of the deterioration in wood. And then the last condition that we note is this one, which we see on the Rockaway side. It was, it was more difficult to get up in that area to really take some time to look, but again, same kind of situation where we have a hole. Most likely, the wood is deteriorated at some level. From the inside, the wood system doesn't look as bad as some of the other places we saw, but this will obviously be another place where we need to do some structural temporary repair in addition to just the watertight repairs from the outside.
Can we, can we go to the genetic matrix? Because what we'd like to show you is a drone inspection that we did, which encompassed the entire building. And it'll really give you a good, everyone, a good view of the thing.
You know what?
At least have a PDF.
So we're going to do the image.
Yes.
Fortunately, just video. There we go. Let's go with this.
Go with this slide. Let's go with this slide, okay?
So this comes from the drone imaging that we did. These are still shots, but this is uploaded, and you can actually get the entire video of it. But this gives you a view, obviously, of the roof, the condition of the roof right now is pretty deteriorated. Steve, your team can chime in whenever. Go to the next one, so we can just take them through. Obviously, here on this wing, you can see it.
Oh, so it was a prior slide.
Yeah.
I mean, what are the condition of those roofs, those flaps? What do we have to do?
So what we can see, what we can see from here is just a, we're not close, right? So we're looking at drone footage. So what we assume we're seeing here, again, from a distance, is on the left tower, you can see kind of a, towards the left side, the backside of that tower, you see like this kind of painted pattern. That's the actual roof membrane that was probably installed sometime in nineteen seventy. I don't believe, any major work on the roof has been done, you know, since the school has left. If you look closer to the, to the right forward corner, you can see kind of like a grayish, beige color. We actually believe that's the original roof of the building. And so, so the roof in the seventies was installed on top of that, and that's nineteen seventies roof, again, I'm making a date up here, but that is partially failed, exposing the original roof. And we think that, that original roof is probably a cold tar pitch roof, because that was what was installed back then, and no one ever removed their cold tar pitch roofs, and they just covered them because it was just, it's difficult to remove.
So what would we do to, so what we have to do?
Um, well, if the original roof is there, a cold tar roof is a really good roof. It's not really, it's not healthy for us. We don't usually specify it anymore. But it's, it's an excellent roof, so we're assuming that it has some protection to it. Obviously, it wasn't functioning adequately when they put this new roof on, so there could be some vulnerabilities onto that. But until we get to that attic space and see the interiors of it, we're not going to know how vulnerable that space is. We haven't gone to the interiors.
But it's fairly safe.
We have included some money in the budget for patching.
I was gonna say.
Certain flat roof areas.
What you imagine and what he means to say by no one took away the old cold tar roof is that if there's some integrity to it, you just layer on top. So surely there should be something for augmenting or somehow supplementing whatever is there in the form of patches and things.
And this is included to make the water tank a priority one?
Yes.
So the priority two, where it talks about the flat roof, that you're just going to go in and fix the areas that would need to be immediately fixed?
Priority one, yes.
Okay.
Your priority two would be when that happens, that, you know, that's not an immediate thing, but that would be the top wall.
That would be the membrane.
And this, I think this is probably the worst picture of the roofs. Again, this is that tower where Michelle was pointing on Rockaway, where there was a failure. There's a lot of, I think it's a major failure of the roof membrane right here, and it looks like areas of the roof sheathing are exposed. And again, Walter said this is part of the priority one. Sheathing is, is basically like you'd say in your house, it's the, it's the wood, you know, a modern house is plywood. In this structure, it's probably tummy groove, two-inch-thick board, and that the membrane is applied to. And it's not just a whole membrane, it's a little diaphragm action. Pictures, broken windows, you can see lots of ivy. The courtyards in the back are infested, if that's the right word for overgrowth of ivy. And you can see on the mansard roofs, you can see something yellow, if they're not, there's some texture to them, you know, missing pieces, as the shingles are falling off. Again, the, these mansards, we, sorry.
The mansard, you said, I'm talking about is these roofs, which are just, they're, they're very steep, right? There's the flat roofs, and there's this, it's almost like a wall. It's really big.
Yeah, the mansards, we believe they were originally slate, and they were, I think the school had replaced them, again, I'm assuming in nineteen seventy, with asphalt shingle. And asphalt shingles are short-term repairs, and you can see, they're, they're well past their service life.
The ivy that you see growing here on the inside of the courtyard, it's all, it's taken all the floors, it's totally completed, totally taken over. On the video, you actually get to see it really well, because it's a close view. Cost-wise regarding the ivy, it's a two-step process. There are two localizations, so it's expensive. We can't just rip the ivy out of the first mortar joint because of where the, because it won't damage it. We have to cut them at their roots, then come back in thirty days or so, another step, and remove it from, when it's dead, it'll shrink and there's a lot of issues.
Can I ask a question on the roof? Are we concerned about asbestos, asbestos?
Uh, yes, that will have to be tested. This is actually, that roof is, that looks like, that looks like a recently eaten roof.
Sorry, I have a follow-up question on asbestos. Let's assume the roof, were we removing the roof or you're just covering over it?
The flat roofs will not be removed.
Right.
And maybe removing sheaves, sheaves responding over, over the roof areas, just get that shingles, unlikely, but possible.
And within the process, within the process, if there's spot remediation, so if they're, they're, they're going to remove it, then they're, okay, yeah.
This is one of the skylights, original to the structure. It's past its service life, and you can see all the mastings piled up and the joints trying to stop water from coming in.
That was a good photo also.
We just showed the gutters.
Yeah. Because the control of stormwater is, is what lack thereof is causing significant damage to this lot of these structures. So we have cost of budget to repair and replace it all. PVC gutters are necessary, PVC, just to get some temporary gutters to control the water from, from pouring over.
Can't there be a lot of movement that?
Correct.
Yeah.
And those are copper, not copper.
There you can see the roof, you can see how much, it's about eight and a half feet tall. And that wall needs to be cleared, and if we get that yet.
Can I ask you a question too? Like the, the little kind of turrets, dormers, the clock towers, structurally, do we feel like it's maintaining at the moment, or?
I mean, we, we haven't seen any sign of, you know, significant deterioration of any of those elements. I mean, there are some vertical cracks in the clock tower on the corners, but nothing that's, you know, necessarily alarming. It's just, it's typical stuff we see, you know, all the buildings we survey. You know, something you see in like a ten-year kind of, if you have a maintained building in ten years, you see something like that. So it's not advanced state.
Have we been able to see the structure of those roofs, like the mansard, the flat roofs? Have we been able to get up there? I mean, it's one thing to have the cover, it's one thing to have more material, it's another thing to see what the joists and all that looks like.
So one, one of the things with the roofs is that, you'll see that, if you look at this, right, this is a big open field of roof in a sense. So most of your issues are at the edges where the water can pool, so a roof should be still whole.
Not those other areas.
No, well, this, again, this is, the roofing is, is, you know, it's deteriorating over time, but the reality is that the water's not hanging out there. It's getting over here. This is where the most damage is. So we don't think there's really significant up there, unless there's an obvious compromise zone of the.
By design, there's slight pitches to those flat roofs, and the water runs off. The problem is it's not running off into the cleaners, it's running to the side. The roofs aren't, the flat roofs aren't.
So we're expecting a structural maintenance to be pretty well intact?
Yes. And then that's to that point, that's kind of why you have not a big issue at these houses, because it's so steep that it just.
It's pulling it down.
Yes, it's not hanging out.
So clock tower does have, has actually a slate, original slate shingles, and, but you can see they're, they're starting to fail. I mean, it's probably been, they've been up there for a hundred and forty years.
Was there like, was that a ladder right here?
Yeah.
So it kind of wraps up what we have. Again, I think it's a curve that the end will be imposed, and just not only the water, the elements, but the other concern, Steve, we could talk a little bit about this, is snow, does any, the snow loads that just along the, if we're really safe, but the loads that you're there upon, I don't know. We don't know. But that's why imposing, protecting it is in order to just keep the damage going, and then so we can inspect and provide further information to everyone here, the community and the board, as to where we go.
One of the questions I had was about covering the windows. I'm kind of hoping that we would be able to find some kind of material that we can close those windows to keep the water out that wouldn't be terribly expensive. I mean, that would run up the cost of this project, should we decide to accept it, quite a bit of money. So I'm just wondering, because I know that the plastic material they use to So I'm just wondering, because I know that the plastic material they use to, in windows now, is even more expensive than the glass that is sold. So what's the charging, is there one?
Plexiglass would probably be, yeah, it's not, it's not going to be more expensive than glass, but that would probably be the most aesthetically, you know, plywood. And quite frankly, probably your only choice in terms of the cost of ones, unless it's real. But that would be the best one, I understand.
So as we put aesthetics over to the side, what would be the first choice to cut the windows?
We have plywood.
I mean, this isn't, this is the site, but it has, is, there's construction going on there. There's work going on there, people have to be understanding and realistic about that. I'm just wondering if you get anything else?
There would be plywood, plywood painted white, because honestly, to spend that kind of money when we know we're going to destroy.
Yeah.
It's not only money, but I don't know what else to say. I would recommend you just go with the plywood, guess painted, so it looks a little bit aesthetically pleasing, because eventually it's going to be removed, and we're going to go in with new windows. The money should go towards the new windows and towards the restoration, not the temporary protection, which is going to cost. We should try to minimize the cost as much as possible on the temporary protection, what is needed in the short term, till we restore the build.
Absolutely, I agree with that. To keep that in mind always with that project, that we're trying to decelerate, we're trying to protect, we're not, aesthetics is, I, I don't see that. I think the fence that we put up, the eight-foot fence, is good-looking, is not a problem. I mean, uh, we did a good job with that. And there is, there are phases in construction work that are not that attractive. That's how I would see it.
We're gonna have to go through a little bit of the ugly period, to see the shining star at the end of that. But we gotta be patient and get through that. Can somebody walk us through the numbers, uh, I'm looking at CMY's estimate here.
So, uh, as I said earlier, I took the items out of, um, the report that Don Tom said he did, in the immediate action section holding, right? There were about a dozen items, and each one of them had been quantified. There's, uh, there's three pages of this, uh, this description part. Have been quantified, and such that, for instance, there may be, I think there are sixty windows, a total of sixty windows, uh, that will be done by two separate groups. Guy in the ground cutting, two guys on the top, testing it as quickly as possible, to try to keep the, keep the cost down that way. Again, these are budgets, these are safe numbers that I feel that when we get with Joe's group, and we're competitive with this stuff, all the bids are going to come in under this. That's, that's the goal here. So, um, if you want, I can provide my item and tell you what it's. Okay? Um, so for cracked and missing glass, there are sixty of them. Each one of them is, uh, seven hundred fifty dollars. And the reason it's seven hundred fifty dollars is there are three, there are three gentlemen. There's, uh, equipment and, uh, materials, caulking and such, whether it's being painted or plexiglass, we'll probably get plexiglass in the summer, you know, it's, it's, it's that. Um, unsafe conditions, there are in great deal, there was thirty-five areas where we identified that, um, uh, bricks are, there are no more, there's some, certain sections of, of areas, there's no bricks, no more. Each one of those, um, you know, it's, 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 uh, through experience doing these things, they could be, uh, more or less, each, each, each one made maybe ten bricks in one spot, five in another, so we carried one thousand dollars per location for that same operation, where there's a guy who makes the mortar on the ground, two guys on, two, two guys on the ground, two guys, four guys on the lift, cost of the lift, material, et cetera. I can walk, you know, get further detail.
You said, do you tend to use the same bricks again, once you take them out?
We, we tend to use the same bricks, yes. There are areas of missing shingles, which each one, again, similar to brick falling off, would be different, we, we include a thousand dollars per location for that. Damage to open roof areas is, is the, is one of the significant ones. And it's important to note that I carried in this, uh, five, five thousand dollars per location. And on Don Tom's report, there are areas of, where it says previously patched, and we can't see what those are, um, because they're behind tar. Some of those tar's have failed a little bit, some haven't. So I assumed every one of those previous patches were some open section of roof. So we just put a tar, you see the one that failed, the big one? All, all, all the vessels were put a tar previously, so I'm assuming there's a hole, the structural. And we could get very lucky, and maybe it's not. So I picked thirty-five of those. I know of, of three that I visually can see, so, um, again, that's something I could improve. Stained glass, there's a proposal from, from a stained glass specialist who intends to remove the stained glass, fill those openings with plywood, we could do something else. Build crates and store the stained glass, there are nine large stained glass windows, two of which, uh, last time I was there were damaged. And store those, there's costing here to store those in a controlled environment for a period of five years. And that, uh, the stained glass contractor's proposal is seventy-two thousand dollars, plus he cannot include scaffolding or any kind of lifts, so there's an allowance of scaffolding, ten thousand dollars, and, um, cost from a storage company for a period of five years of sixty-seven thousand, like, dollars. Doesn't have to be five years, this is.
Just interrupt you on that one. On the stained glass, when you say storage, uh, so in other words, you know, we're just not simply taking stained glass off and sticking it in the garage?
No. It's anything.
Really nice.
The reason that I'm asking this question is because there have been residents that have said, you know, why don't we just go in there, we can do it ourselves, and why we spend most money? Maybe else, the bottom line is that we want to preserve something, which is supposedly as valuable as this is, we have to put it in a controlled, a controlled environment, so.
Correct.
Just wanted everybody to understand.
And, um.
But that's true.
The crates are a tremendous amount of damage.
Well, yeah, but that's the reason why it's.
It's deteriorating.
That's why it's deteriorating.
Okay, okay.
No, yeah.
Feminella is one of the top companies.
Say again?
Feminella is one of the top companies that we've worked with in the past, doing stained glass. To your point, it's exactly what we do. We control the environment, they take care of it, so then five years when it comes back.
Okay.
Um, there's a, a proposal here from, from a landscaping contractor to, to remove all of the ivy in two, in two steps, as I said. All the weeds and, and growth, large, there are large, uh, plants that were bushes on either side of the entry that Don Tom said he can't see with the saw, so everything's going to go, except there, I think there are two trees inside the fence, maybe more. All the trees are stained, at least in this, uh, this.
Was this the section that was sixty-two thousand dollars?
That's correct.
I, I frankly have difficulty with that number. You know, as you say, cut the ivy down, you will let it die, then it comes off, tries to yanking it off. See, I mean, maybe thirty thousand dollars, sixty-two thousand dollars?
We might be simplifying slightly the cost of the, the ivy.
Might be simplifying slightly the cost of the, the ivy.
Well, I have, I have.
No, 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 I know, but this is like, you know, it's, it's very high in the air, there's a lot of it. You gotta get guys working very safely to do those things, they gotta be all rich, you gotta rent the equipment. There's, I would love to believe it's as easy as like putting up.
I don't think it's easy.
More slugs and yanking it off, but I, I.
I don't think it's easy, I don't.
And also, no, 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 no.
Not sixty-two thousand dollars.
I think we should go in, it's of course going to be bid. I think this is a responsible number, not to exceed something like this. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, look at it with rose-colored glasses either. I think it's a big job, it's, it's like hacking through the jungle back there. So I want to make sure that it's, that it's done right, and we put in a realistic number to deal with.
Agreed, it's, it's a contractor that refuses for probably twenty-five years. He's not doing the job, it's going to be competitively bid, so it's, this is a safe number for us, it's okay.
This is the number for the contract that we use for twenty-five years.
That's correct.
They're in Garden City.
The Garden City.
They work for the village.
I, I know who they are.
What?
They work for the village for quite a while.
Sometimes.
I know who they are.
You know, one thing that we don't see in the budget here is, uh, waste. I'm assuming some of it will be hazardous, so it'll be a higher cost associated.
Um, it's included in, there's, there's a hundred thousand dollar allowance for spot cleanup, it's included in that.
Spot cleanup, you mean the whole, like, the, the long way?
It's included in, in the, it's included in the numbers, it's included in, for instance, Arbus, it takes all the, all the brush and the, or the brush up away. Each different section has the cleanup.
Taking all the roof and everything?
Same thing.
So to Stephen's point, you know, something needs to be bagged and, uh, taped out, carted away, or a certain site that we have to, you know, kind of pay for, that, that's accounted for here?
That's correct.
Great. And then, is there any contingency on this number?
There is, um, there's contingency in the line items. I don't have a, I have a line item for contingency, and I'm, I'm comfortable with, there's at least five percent.
Can I continue?
Sure. So there's the cost of, of, uh, two area lift rentals for, for a period of three months, which is, uh, they're, they're twelve thousand dollars a month. These are significant lifts, they're not, they're not small area lifts, they have to get to every location and respire. They're probably the biggest ones that exist. I have, uh, costs in here for, for six men for a period of three weeks to, to, um, clear and repair, and do whatever's necessary for head materials for the gutters, to, to, to patch, patch gutters with membrane if necessary, or install new leaders where there aren't none, and, and get the storm control management. Again, all of the, the rates are, have to be prevailing wage, so this is not, it's, it's, this is not, I can't just get two guys off the corner and have them come to this work, this is prevailing wage. Um, structural shoring.
Good point, for example, landscape, the removal of ivy and stuff is more expensive than if you and I did it better, I suppose. Because prevailing wage. About thirty percent more.
Agreed. So the, the structural shoring, we showed you three locations. Um, I believe I have forty, or four, the fourth one here is the, the one inside the entry on the left, which is just some, uh, four-by-four shoring with screw jacks, it's, it's not significant, that one. It's seventy-five hundred, uh, dollars. The one at the grand stair for the scaffolding alone, uh, we have an allowance of a hundred thousand dollars. Adding system, adding some framing in the other two, and, and cleanup, about twenty-five thousand dollars apiece. The, the structural shoring is a hundred fifty-eight thousand total, for those four areas that we know. Like I said, I have a hundred thousand dollars for spot cleanup. And, um, I have proposals from, from different consultants, pest control consultants to remove the pitches, once the building's sealed in. They have to go, otherwise they're just going to continue to live in there and die, and that's a gross promise. So they're out, that's only twelve, right? And, uh, the cost of, of a site manager, someone to oversee, from CMY, someone to on-site oversee, the work, the pre-mark period that anticipated the thing.
So could, could you, you're saying one guy, we're going to pay five thousand dollars a week to, to be the site manager, is that what they're looking at?
Yes, that's what that is.
And what, what is he going to do exactly?
The, the contracts that, that these different trades will hold, um, someone, and frankly, it could be someone from the village, but this is what we do for them.
No, I'm just asking.
Someone has to be on-site to oversee and make sure that they're doing the work that's prescribed to them in their contract, so that there's the rigors of work and certain reports that have to be followed, and we keep their logs and make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do. That the village gets what they're paying for.
So we're talking about CMY doing this, or?
Yes, that's what's causing the limitations for that, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the trustees? No?
I'd just like to say thank you to the consultants. I think the report was really done extremely thorough.
I agree.
And, you know, having, uh, seen their process and the results of their process, I feel really, really confident with the decisions we made to this point. You know, I commend you, anyone so far on this, great, thank you.
Huge thank you.
Thank you.
We wish we had had better ivy, couldn't we?
Yeah, yeah, next time I'll get a screen in here.
Uh, reaching this point now, I think our meeting is, uh, public meeting is over. And, uh, is there a motion for an executive session?
All the protective sessions later.
I'll say it.
Yeah, the.
Okay, we have a reason to, we have a reason to close here. For being able to.
And that was pretty limited, I guess, and I was including a couple of sessions in the vote for an executive session. They are, and you are a public official for six seconds.
Back to. And a second, in all his favor, and a opposed, and that motion carried unanimously. United everyone's standing for the majority.